And we also have the MyLA 311 mobile app. And we have a webpage that we also use so that citizens can do self-service.
We were able to dramatically cut our wait time down to averaging two to three minutes by providing ongoing training, refresher training, and changing our processes based on the feedback provided by the communication information representatives.
And all those things combined have really helped to decrease the wait times and improve the level of service that we can provide.
This is one call to City Hall and that the employees are here well-trained and experienced to handle their calls and be able to provide excellent customer service.
I feel like I'm doing community service by participating in this. And I think all of our agents feel that way too. So as a team, I think we feel really good that we're able to help people and provide a positive image of the city of Los Angeles.
Download the app for even faster service. Well, we're all familiar with recycling, right? But have you ever tried composting? Well, Rasha Goel has more on how we can help improve our environment and save the city money at the same time.
It's called composting. An easy way to turn your fruit scraps, vegetable peels, and yard trimmings into soil conditioner. And here's why you should be doing it.
It helps combat climate change and reduce the amount of carbon material that's going to landfills which causes, of course, creates methane gas.
This was part of the information Steve Casares from the Bureau of Sanitation shared at a workshop that was recently held by the city's Department of Public Works.
The green materials, the nitrogen-based material, it's going mostly the kitchen waste material. It's going to be like eggshells, the food scraps you're creating, coffee grounds, that kind of stuff. The brown material is going to be carbon material. It's going to be paper, cardboard, leaves, branches, sawdust, stuff that's dry.
Things we cannot compost are meat, fatty food, bones, dog or cat feces, diseased plants, and treated wood.
You don't have to live in a single-family house for home composting. In fact, if you live in an apartment, condo, or even from your workspace, you can still participate in the process.
One of the ways they can do this via verma composting, which is utilizing worms to eat the green waste they create at their apartment or condo.
Attendees say they found the workshop to be very helpful.
Didn't know much about worms before, so I thought that was just great. I didn't know that they were so impactful. The workshop was easy to understand, was well-presented, and I think everybody should take it.
And one more tip.
Do not utilize composting plastics. They can't be composted in your bin, they can't be composted at our facilities, they're actually a very poor form of plastic that can't be recycled.
There are also various options for bins. You can make one yourself, purchase at a store, or get one through the city.
You take the landscaping material, you put it in there, you can turn it into compost between four and six months. We subsidize the cost of these materials. Usually they retail between $16 and $80 depending where you go to. We offer $20 because we really want the constituents in the city to compost and be part of the solution.
There's so much to learn. More free workshops will be held at various locations. For more information, you can call 1-800-773-2489 or log onto lacitysand.org/compostworkshops. A little something we can all do to help save our planet.
And remember, you can use compost as mulch, soil conditioner, or in potting mix. Well, when it comes to internet speeds, 4G is pretty fast, right? Well, wait until we get up to 5G. The technology will be here sooner than you think.
So the really interesting part about 5G is it's going to affect every single person in the city of Los Angeles. It's going to make the internet more equitable, it's going to make it faster, it's going to make it easier to do things we cannot even yet imagine.
The expectation is that 5G will, there'll be about 100 times more connected devices. The data rate for end-users is going to be at least 100 times. The latency through the network is going to be improved at least five times. The battery life is going to be improved by at least 10 times.
So the fifth generation is not just iterative, it's transformative. So the way that we think about old-school dial-up and today is the way we're going to think about today and tomorrow with fifth generation.
The first area is called enhanced mobile broadband. The second area is going to be machine-to-machine type communications. And then the third type of applications is called ultra-reliable, low-latency applications.
The other thing is a lot of people realize that a big aspect of 5G is going to be around entertainment. Streaming video, gaming, all kinds of great new fun things to do online, virtual reality. And as part of that, here with Hollywood at the center, we know that we'll be building up our entertainment industry as well.
What we're doing out here, we're installing small cells. We call them small cells. Basically, we're going to install these small cells on poles.
But to get to the street light, we're pulling electricity from the Department of Water and Power, we're pulling cable through the Department of Street Services, it connects into transportation, so LA Department of Transportation's part of it, the Bureau of Engineering, wrecking parks. Almost every city department touches in some way some aspect of this, whether they're going to be part of building it, part of operating it, or part of consuming the 5G. And so all of this has made a really interesting connectivity and digital inclusion working group, where about 14 different city departments and elected officials participate.
In the future, it's going to be thousands of these units all over the city.
So we're going to be one of the first cities that is going to be 5G. And it's important for two reasons. One is right now, the way that people can access the internet at home isn't equitable. It's been built based on what companies wanted to do. Now with fifth generation, the city is working with companies to make sure that that next generation of internet is equitable across the city. So it'll be just as easy to get online, just as reliable wherever you are in the city, no matter whether you're in a high-income area or a low-income area. And the next thing that's really interesting about having LA as an early city is that the kinds of businesses that are going to create completely new kinds of experiences online will be building in 5G. And if we don't have 5G in LA, they won't be building it here. We want those new businesses to be part of our tech sector and part of our global connection to the world. So we want the 5G companies to incubate and start here in Los Angeles. For LA, 5G means equity, economic growth, education, and entertainment.
LA is one of a handful of cities to roll out the technology starting as early as this year. La Plaza de Cultura y Artes is known as a historical monument in LA. It's also about to become the center of a multicultural community as the new La Plaza Village goes up. Ana Marcos introduces us to some of the muralists who will make the project truly unique.
This new development going up near Olvera Street will boost housing and economic development in downtown LA. La Plaza Village will put hundreds of units on the market, many at affordable rates, and provide thousands of square feet of retail space, all with a Latino twist.
Because we look at this as the Latino center of Los Angeles, this is where the city was first created. So the project has been designed in a Mexican motif, if you will, with very bright, vivid colors.
But La Plaza Village is also about art, culture, and the people. Local leaders announced the four Latino muralists who will paint the art on its walls. Themes will focus on immigrants, family, and Latino contributions to LA. Or how about "La Reina de los Angeles," Our Lady, the Queen of Angels, which was LA's founding name.
I chose to make a more modern, secular version of that because after all, this is the city of the Our Lady, Queen of Angels. So she seemed appropriate, she seemed aspirational, she's young, she's strong.
This artist's immigrant father once collected cardboard for a living. His mother was a farmworker. A generation later, he has become an artist and college professor, so he's celebrating immigrants and family.
And that's what I wanted to represent, people who want to get ahead in this country. My parents were immigrants, you know, they made a big sacrifice.
The four murals will be spaced along the outside walls of the complex so they are visible, and everyone, residents, pedestrians, and motorists alike, can see them.
My father was best known as a labor leader, but his vision was much larger. He understood that after long, hard day's work, people come home to a whole different set of problems. The lack of access to affordable housing, educational opportunities, access to the political and civic affairs of their communities.
And it appears future residents of La Plaza Village will get all of the above. The project is set to open in early 2019.
20% of the 355 apartments going up will be affordable units. Well, when you think of adopting a pet, a dog or cat probably comes to mind. But have you ever thought of adopting a chicken? Well, many folks have, and they came out to a workshop recently, put on by the city to learn how they can adopt and raise one.
Yep, this is really happening. People from all over LA are adopting chickens as pets.
And I think they're just wonderful little creatures and a lot of fun.
The Department of Animal Services hosted a seminar about chicken adoption and care. The seminar took place at the East Valley Shelter in Van Nuys and was attended by over 200 people.
A lot of people don't know that you can keep these kind of pets as indoor pets. They don't make that much of a mess. And even a rooster that's kept indoors probably makes less noise than a parrot would, I would imagine.
A couple of years ago, I met a rooster named Checkers who was incredibly friendly. And since then, I've started handling every chicken that comes in here. Very few of the staff and volunteers prioritize chickens. So I've kind of made it my little niche here at East Valley.
Do we have some crowing?
While the average cost of owning a dog or a cat can run in excess of $1,200 a year, owning a chicken as a pet can be half the cost and can provide the owners with a nice little bonus: the ability to know exactly where their eggs are coming from.
There's a general effort to get us closer to, back to nature and to being self-sufficient and eating locally. And, you know, this is part of that effort from my wife and I is to be more self-sufficient for basic necessities.
Since chickens lay the majority of their eggs during the first two years, it doesn't mean their lives are less meaningful to these attendees.
Yo, you keep taking care of it. Hey, yo, it's like any other animal. I mean, a cat doesn't give you food, a dog doesn't give you food unless you're in other countries. But, I mean, no, they're companions. And so you just love and take care of them.
So perhaps it's time to think about the chicken as not just a super tasty meal, because we all know they are. But it's time to think of them as a great addition to the family.
LA City Animal Shelters also have rabbits, reptiles, and rodents in need of homes. For more, visit laanimalservices.com. Proposition 10 gets support from local leaders. Downtown's Food Truck Tuesdays are becoming a big hit, and you'll soon be able to tour the Hollyhock House without ever leaving your home. All these stories in City Beat. LA City Councilmember Marquise Harris-Dawson, advocacy groups, and other state and city officials gathered at Lamarck Park Village to announce their support for Proposition 10, the Affordable Housing Act, which would expand local jurisdiction's ability to enact rent control ordinances statewide. Opponents say Prop 10 would make the housing shortage even worse by discouraging new construction. But Harris-Dawson says Prop 10 will go a long way to help the city's housing crisis.
This proposition is very, very important because it repeals a law that stops cities and communities all over the state from doing what they need to do to care for and to manage the housing situation in their town.
Food truck mania is alive and well in the city of Angels. The trend of buying your hot food at the curb keeps growing. In one part of downtown LA, Food Truck Tuesdays have become a regular part of the workweek. Food Truck Tuesdays in downtown LA provide a great midweek treat for office workers, tourists, and others in this part of downtown LA as food trucks converge on Grand Park.
I mean, you get three or four trucks, three or four days that we're here, I can't think of anything better, can you?
The Los Angeles Department of Cultural Affairs announced that an online virtual reality tour of the Hollyhock House at Barnesdale Art Park is set to debut this fall. The city council approved $133,000 in funding last year to produce the online virtual reality tour of the Frank Lloyd Wright-designed home in East Hollywood, which was built before the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990. Because it is a national historic landmark, it cannot be altered to increase accessibility. Mayor Eric Garcetti said everyone should be able to experience LA's cultural landmarks, adding that Hollyhock House is a remarkable piece of architecture, and a virtual reality will allow people with disabilities and the elderly to explore a location with deep history in our city. Dodger slugger Yasiel Puig looks forward to LA's newest ballpark for underserved kids. Gil Reyes has more on the team effort from South LA.
Fun-loving Dodgers outfielder Yasiel Puig helps break ground on the latest Dodgers Dream Field. These are youth ballparks built or refurbished in underserved neighborhoods. Puig says he wished he had one while growing up poor in Cuba.
You know, I come here to the United States to play baseball and be here in Los Angeles and see every day the community and the fans go every night to the stadium and foot the stadium and show my name and help my team to win. That's the reason I opened my charter foundation to help kids.
Puig's Youth Sports Foundation, as well as the LA Dodgers Foundation, are pitching in to make this happen. The field is being built at Algin Sutton Rec Center in South Los Angeles, an alternative to gang life, says mom Karina Lundes.
Especially in the neighborhood where we live, we need that. You know, there's a lot of other things going on, so this kind of focuses them in the actual community playing, and so I'm just very happy for it.
This will be the 50th Dodgers Dream Field, the second one at the Rec Center. It's set to open in September.
The Dodgers have just been such a wonderful partner to us, and it's just, we're so grateful to everything that your organization has done.
And every time you need something from me, I go and be here too. Hey, kids, let's go play baseball.
In South Los Angeles, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Sutton Rec Center will now have two Dodger Dream Fields. The first was established at Rec Center back in 2003. LA Fleet Week rolls into town, and so does the Navy Film Festival. Celebrate a Made in LA Arts and Music Festival. And if you're a vegan, you won't want to miss this street fair. All this and this week's things to do.
We're at Vegan Street Fair!
Vegan Street Fair returns to Los Angeles for 2018 with a plethora of vegan-friendly eats and vendors, including Evolution Burger, Charlie's Brownies, and much more. The fair will include games, live entertainment, karaoke, and more vegan fun than you'll know what to do with. The fair takes place at the Federal Bar in North Hollywood on September 1st through the 2nd. On Saturday, the 1st, you must be 21 or over to enter, while the fair will be open to all ages on Sunday. The fair runs from 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM both days. The Federal Bar is located at 5303 Lancashire Boulevard in North Hollywood. Featuring black and white to modern-era films, LA Fleet Week 2018, presented by Tom Clancy's Jack Ryan on Amazon Prime Video, will include a Labor Day Weekend Navy Film Festival at the iconic Warner Grand Theater in downtown San Pedro. The festival will celebrate the century-long relationship between the US Navy and the world-renowned film industry that has brought military life, storylines, and battle realities to the big screen since 1918. The film fest begins September 1st at 4:00 PM at Warner Grand Theater in San Pedro. Golden Road Brewing presents Made in LA, a two-day music and arts festival celebrating Los Angeles' art and culture. Join Golden Road for great performances, rows of food trucks, art installations, and vendors. Festival runs September 1st through the 3rd from 5:00 PM to 1:30 AM at Golden Road Brewing in Silverlake. And that's a look at some things to do. The city of LA is gearing up for Independence Day, Mexican Independence Day, that is. Ana Marcos has more on what's in store for this year.
Mexico! As far as holidays go, El Grito is a big one for LA's Mexican-American community. And this year, it promises to grow bigger than ever. El Grito celebrates Mexico's independence in 1810.
Historically, El Grito was this cry for independence amongst ordinary people who did the extraordinary in fighting and achieving their independence.
And in that spirit of independence, who says the Mona Lisa can't wear a sombrero? Councilmember Monica Rodriguez walks by her favorite Pacoima mural, painted by an artist whose work will appear at this year's El Grito. Rodriguez will host this year's Big Bash, and she promises some new experiences at the party.
This year is unique because we've actually extended the celebration into Grand Park as well. We are going to have food trucks, we have Molcajete Domingueiro, which is a marketplace of local artisans.
And there's more. The councilwoman also promises someone special will be taking the stage.
We want to encourage everyone to come out early to get a good spot for the performances because I'm not prepared to actually share at this moment in time who we've secured, but it's going to be big.
The festival is on track to be as colorful as ever and more. And it's free.
For more information, visit elgritolat2018 eventbrite.com. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Cain from all of us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
We're from Winnetka. Get it, girl! You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. This is our city and our channel.
Good morning, good morning, everyone. Shhh. If you need a seat, please find a seat. I want to welcome you to City Hall, to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. This council meets every two years. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. All are welcome. Mr. Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you call the roll?
Blue Winfield, Bonnabu, Sadio, Angler, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Caress, Kokroyan, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, ten members present in the quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Kokroyan moves. Harris Dawson seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Rue moves and Price seconds. Continue.
Mr. President, items one through 33 are items for which public hearings have been held. Please note that a corrected committee report for item 21 has been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Thank you. Let's members prepare to vote on these items. Mr. Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Now tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
And, Mr. President, those ordinances will go over one week unless reconsidered later today with 12 members.
Thank you very much for that reminder. Continue.
Items 34 through 38 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
So without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have any cards on these items?
Cards on all items, sir.
Okay, then let's continue.
Mr. President, that takes council to presentations or items called special.
Thank you. Okay, let me get... We're gonna do at least one multiple comment. So I'd like to call Mr. Previn, Eric Previn. If you come forward. Items 34, 35, 36, and 37. Mr. Previn, and then your general public comment. And 38. Go ahead, Mr. Previn.
Thank you, sir. You got me a little... You caught me a little off guard.
Sorry about that.
A little out of practice, but well done. Nicely done. First of all, we can't move forward without thanking the Araslovsky family and the Plates family, who are city partners in a way, and they're approving commissioners. As you know, long tradition of that here, and we just have to welcome them onboard, along with a bunch of other folks who are not on the speaking portion, which is why I'm gonna go right now to the next piece. Which is item 34 and term limits, because I know David Rue has been an outspoken advocate for reform in general, and here we have a tree maintenance issue. So you may be thinking, what does that have to do with term limits? It's a good question, but it does have to do with the way we collect contributions from various entities in the city. Sometimes we collect them from developers, and as you recall, David Rue bravely stood up to the developer contribution idea, and now that's gone away. But we're still trying to invent a way that makes it so that, for example, tree trimmers. And I know that people think, oh, tree trimming is nothing. It's just a run-of-the-mill activity, but it's actually very, very important to the city, and there's a lot of those kinds of entities and players. So, you know, I note this with a degree of concern. Item number 35, obviously, we have Notre Dame getting a big bond, a bond to repair. So this is a school. I support this 100%, and the city has no real liability, which is why it's out on the agenda for everyone to see. Now, Mel... I can't pronounce his last name, L-L-O-M-I-N, is gonna be the alternate for the Metro Gold Line Foothill Authority. Now, this is markedly Thomas Land because it's the metro, and we have a number of projects where we're being sued as we try. I know today we were celebrating Casa del Sol, or I think you were, HHH, kind of a celebration to coincide with all the great news as we face a homeless crisis, but this was just an opportunity to appoint a new insider to help out, and he's an interesting guy. I think he works in the valet business. Item number 37 is obviously the Tefr hearings. Now, nobody loves Tefr hearings, sir, more than you and Mr. Sadio, and we're gonna hope that you guys get this one right, because it's coming up. This is for 639 South Commonwealth in your district, just a little $28 million item. Nothing special or particularly upsetting. And, sir, I just have to take one second as we round the corner to thank Mr. Caress for standing up against the mayor in a way, not because he doesn't like reveling all hours of the night. We all do, but I think...
That seems to be off of the agenda item. Perhaps you want to go to the general public comment?
Well, I thought there was a public necessity for alcohol on here. So I don't know. If you want me to...
That item is not subject here.
Then let's give back the 20 seconds to go to the general public comment, which I'll just simply...
Okay, we'll give him...
I'll finish that thought for you.
Okay, Mr. President.
The thought is that I agree that it's of concern to have people motoring around at 4:00 in the morning, and I think that it is very, very helpful that Caress stood up to the mayor, but I don't know. If the state is allowing local jurisdictions to, you know, with city approval, it seems inconceivable that this group would be able to stand up for their constituents, even as they're yammering on about saving lives in Vision Zero. It just seems like this group is much more focused on the all-night reveling piece, on getting the big conferences and the people in here, and, you know, I just hope that Mr. Caress is not alone in standing up for the constituent stakeholders who wonder about whether or not we really want to fuel that late-night activity, but who knows? So, thank you, and with that in mind, sir, when the issue regarding campaign finance gets baked, because I know they just sent you a letter, please open it up for real discussion in an open timeframe in your meetings for a couple hearings, because I think that would help square away a fair and equitable program going forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Okay, Mr. Herman, you have the same items, 34 through 38, and the general public.
Considering that I'm disabled and that I'm dealing with Ms. Martinez for $8,000 to assist in the financing of refinancing the capital improvement for kids at school, you see, even a disabled retarded person like me can read what an improvement financing the capital improvements at the Notre Dame High School. Let's go Notre Dame. Let's go Notre Dame. Campus for 313645 Riverside Drive in Castle District 4. And then what about Mr. Wesson in item 36, y'all? Approving the melcher. What the hell's a melcher? Well, it deals with the city of Los Angeles governing the Board of Metro Gold, the same discriminatory people that don't allow disabled people like me to safely navigate the sidewalks because we sued them under Willett's versus Los Angeles for $1.3 billion, you fucking asshole attorney. And then you go to item 34 in CD4. I'm not gonna talk about the rapist rule, so I'm gonna go to the next page, asshole. Yeah, look at item 37 now. That's Mr. Wesson. I visited his office this morning, asking him to exceed the $28,000 for the purpose of financing an acquisition rehabilitation. Well, that's right up my ass, because I like to swim. I like to swim, everybody, because I'm disabled, and me and my little service dog want to learn how to swim so that we can have affordable housing and a facility to be located near our fucking extremities. Oh, I'm sorry, amenities. Yeah, amenities is a fancy word where you have shopping, buses, trains, and public transportation, and more so, all this affordable housing that I've been asking for because I'm disabled, and I just got my SSDI for the record, assholes. Thank you. Thank you. See, when you do a good job here at the podium, no one discriminates. You're allowed affordable housing, and that's why the Sergeant of Arms asked those policemen to ask me not to get involved in Weezer's presentation on the stairs earlier this morning. So, in further words, I'm gonna go directly to my... Straight to my public comment.
Just give him his one minute.
So as you heard, I am still here. I'm here because Bill Watkins was yelling at me back there yesterday, day before, and Mr. Herman Wesson has become my medical professional. Yes, he's impersonating a mental health doctor, accusing me of having mental health. Take him out of here. Take him out of here. Is that a threat? I find that a threat. If you want mental health, help, because you irritate and put a team of helpless motherfuckers, Herman, to not help me. Am I scary? Am I belligerent? He's not getting better. He's fucking worse! But yelling is not a scary thing, folks. You children here in the audience are gonna learn what First Amendment really means under 42 U.S.C. 1983, because I know how to fuck the city attorney. Fuck the white city attorney and fuck Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Thank you. Mr. Spindler, you have the same items plus your public comment.
Okay. It's a great day for everybody. Now, we're starting with number 36. The m-melcher? What the fuck is that? Foothill Extension? That's not the 10th District. Fuck is that? What does this got to do with the 10th District? More regional payoffs. That is in the 7th District. Mommy Monica! That's who's in it, but Herb Wesson forgot he ain't controlling CD7 no more. M-Monica is. Now, we get to the maps. Fuck the maps! I don't want no more of these maps. Fuck these maps. I don't want no more CD11 maps. Stop building those box cutter shit buildings. Then we get to 37. Again, the mafia, CD10. I'm gonna give Mr. Sedillo a map, and I'm gonna explain more about this mafia thug known as Herb Wesson and what he's doing to this city. He is taking money and bribes from developers. This is not right. It needs to stop. This project violates SEQA in number 37. This project does not give the number of affordable units for lower-income veterans and homeless, as he promised. Lying, lying, lying. He is doing the crap, and he is shitting on the 1st District on the border of the 10th District, where he's putting shit up that's gonna negatively infect us in the 1st District because his 10th District, he don't want to fuck with Koreatown anymore, because the Korean town said, "Yukasol," and in Korean, that means fuck Herb Wesson.
Stay on the subject, Mr. Spindler.
Listen to the bench, 35. Okay, CD4. Speaking of Koreans, this is the bad Korean. Michael Rue, aka The Rapist, on number 35, wants to rape the taxpayers for $8 million for Notre Dame. What is the purpose? Because they hold meetings at the Notre Dame campus for things like the Sherman Oaks Homeowners Association, where Mr. Wesson repeatedly has shown up to lobby, and because he's lobbying, he has a conflict of interest on number 35. Mr. City Attorney makes sure he does not vote on this item, because he is taking money from the city's treasury to help campaign donors and people who are campaign donors that go to that place for meetings to discuss city business. He is stealing this $8 million. It's no to the Catholic Church. The Catholic Church rapes kids no more!
Let's give him his one minute.
Now you see a map. The crime, the Lafayette Park scam. As you can see on this map, Herb Wesson is dumping a homeless encampment on the southern west edge of the district in CD1, and it's going to negatively impact everybody in the 1st District. And doing this, and the reason he's doing this, is because he wants to get Koreatown off his ass, because he tried to put this on Vermont and 7th, well within his district. So he's gonna dump homeless on the 1st District, primarily Latinos. I attended a meeting Monday night. He threatened me. His staff threatened me for attending that public meeting, but I'm gonna tell you right now, I got the Chuck E. Cheese. We got everybody in the 10 buildings around it. They're gonna file a lawsuit because we want a SEQA evaluation report. I urge Councilman Sedillo, which I'm gonna present this for the record, to stop this project that does negatively impact your district, Mr. Sedillo, 99%.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Your time's expired. Your time has expired. Your time, Mr. Spindler, please sit down. You're now disrupting. Please sit down. Sit down, Mr. Spindler. This is the last time I'm gonna ask you. Patricia Mendoza? Patricia Mendoza? Come on down. You're here for a general public comment? Why are you here, Ms. Mendoza?
Yes, sir. Good morning to the city council.
Then give her her minute for general public comment.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Are you here to speak on...
I signed up for different items.
Okay, so you just stay on topic. Give her her three minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Today, good morning to the public and city councils. Today, I'm here to relay a message to my city council. For the past three, four years, I've been coming to your officer, with all due respect, to have a private meeting. They're building all these buildings where I live, where I was born and raised, on Tempo and Boldry. You're lucky I didn't protest it regarding the 200 and something building that was built just two properties next to my house. My house and my brother's Gil Sodio is cracking. It's falling apart. From the Royball Learning Center, from all this construction that's been going on, and no one cares. All prior city councils didn't care. No one helped me. Now they're trying to build, and you know that building behind my backyard, seven floors, no parking. I'm not gonna have a son. This person that's gonna build the seven floors, it claims it's for the homeless and veterans? I don't care. I don't care, because you guys have enough money to approve these projects and these big building apartments should be put in.
Okay, Ms. Mendoza, now, Ms. Mendoza, that is your general public comment. Do you have... You did not speak on the items. So are you... Are you prepared to actually speak on the items? Then speak on the items. If you don't, then you forfeit your time.
You know what, sir? With all due respect, I really don't understand what you're saying.
No, whatever. You...
You're taking a lot of my time.
No, no, no. I'm not taking your time. Ms. Mendoza, you signed up to speak on specific items?
Yes, yes.
Plus, general public comment. I gave you your general public comment, and now you're not prepared to speak on the items. So, thank you for coming.
You know what? With all due respect...
No, no, no. Your time, sergeants. Sergeants, help her find a seat. Help her find a seat. Ms. Mendoza, please find a seat. Ms. Mendoza, please find a seat. Thank you. Thank you. Please find a seat. Mr. Herman, please find a seat. Please find a seat. Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Mendoza, please stop disrupting the meeting and take your seat. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Mendoza, we're gonna have to ask... We're gonna have to ask you to leave. Sergeants, would you remove Ms. Mendoza from the council chambers? Just ask her to go on outside.
And Mr. Herman is shouting as well.
And to the sergeants, you could take Mr. Herman along. He's already been warned. No, Mr. Herman, we told you. We just go on, Mr. Herman. We are still being disrupted. We are still being disrupted by Ms. Mendoza and Mr. Herman. They're being escorted out of the council chambers at this time. Mr. Herman, if you're gonna behave, I'm gonna let you behave. Okay, Ms. Mendoza, please leave.
Just for the record, Ms. Mendoza is shouting as she goes out and disrupting our meeting.
Let's now prepare to vote on items 34 through 38. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Mr. Harris Dawson?
Mr. Chair, I'm asking that we reconsider item number 31 for an amendment.
Okay, let's... Item 31, let's vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
You prepared to move forward now, or has it been circulated?
The amendment has been circulated. The amendment has been circulated, so we would move 31 with the amendment.
Let's hold it for a second and make sure that it's been properly circulated. Mr. Buscayino, are you ready with your presentation?
And, Mr. President, I'm sorry. In the meantime, there's been a request to send item 35 forthwith.
So ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we're gathering here, a lot of...
As we're gathering here, a lot of LAPD love for a man who showed a lot of love and heart behind his badge, celebrating thirty-three years with the Los Angeles Police Department. His official day of retirement is today. Let's give a warm welcome to Kenneth Baxter with the Los Angeles Police Department, joined here by his loving family, his fiancee Christine Dixon, his mother, who's here, his commanding officer, LAPD's newest and brightest deputy chief, who's here Regina Scott, um, command, uh, Commander Beverly Lewis. Bev, I was about to promote you just now, which is not, I'm okay with that. But this is a reunion, Mr. President. I'm, I'm just pleased and blessed to be alongside, um, LAPD's, um, the best and brightest here. Ken, where are you? Come on up, sir. Right over here. This man here is beloved in the LAPD. And, um, thirty-one years and three months of public service. Just Wednesday, if you recall, colleagues, we were here celebrating blessing and, um, highlighting our men and women in the military with Navy Week and Fleet Week. Whether you're serving in the military or serving here in the LAPD in public safety or the Fire Department, we owe a debt of gratitude for, um, men like Ken Baxter. When we talk about service and sacrifice, when we talk about LAPD's core values of, of integrity and all we say and do, of putting communities first, Ken embodies that. He's been assigned since two thousand and one to the Pacific Division in Council District Eleven. He has been responsible for front desk operations, including taking citizen crime reports and handling community complaint calls. And as you know, colleagues, that front desk officer is one of the most critical roles LAPD has. They are the face of the police station. Somebody, they are the voice of the police station when somebody calls. And of course, it's fitting that he served as a front desk officer, because his love and service for others. He's been responsible for kit room operations, which is where officers go to get their equipment before hitting the streets for patrol. He's also been temporarily loaned to Pacific Division detectives to assist in solving burglary and burglary for motor vehicle cases. He is, has some strong ties to our Watts community. Graduated in Vermin Day High School in nineteen seventy-nine, and went on to Junior College of Southwest Community College, then on to Cal State Dominguez Hills, Go Toros, earning a bachelor's of science degree in sociology and a minor in psychology. Ken began his career at the Los Angeles Police Department on May twenty-sixth, nineteen eighty-seven, as a recruit police officer in Class Five Eighty-seven, and he was subsequently assigned to Rampart Division from nineteen eighty-seven to eighty-eight. And from eighty-eight to ninety-two, he moved on to Central Traffic Division as an investigator for various types of cases, hit-and-run cases, fatal accident investigations, DUI enforcement. Also moved on to, uh, Community, uh, Traffic Coordination Section to provide administrative services related to traffic issues in the South Los Angeles communities. From nineteen ninety-two to two thousand, he was assigned to Wilshire Patrol Division as a latent print officer with Wilshire detectives, where he worked on narcotics, gang, and vice contacts. And in two thousand, Ken briefly moved back to Traffic Coordination Section, where he, uh, again worked as a court liaison with the city attorney's office. And throughout his career, he coached baseball, I'm sorry, basketball, rather, mentored countless young people, and took it upon himself to assist those who lacked role models in their lives. And the role model he, that he was most proud to serve was a father of his two amazing sons, Christopher and Jonathan. Last year, you may recall, colleagues, both Christopher and Jonathan suddenly and tragically were killed in an early-morning fatal craps, car crash on November fifth, two thousand and seventeen. Here you had an officer who was tasked with many years serving as a traffic officer, promoting traffic safety, investigating accidents, and it was that call he got when his eldest son, Christopher Wayne Baxter, and Jonathan JB Isaiah Baxter, lost their lives. They were the light of his life. They brought joy, love, laughter to everyone with whom they came into contact. And Ken, you made mention you wish your boys were here. We've got to believe that they are here, smiling from above, and so proud of their father for serving our great city for over thirty-one years. But in continuing their legacy, Ken established a scholarship fund, the Drew League Foundation, in the name of his two sons. In honor of Chris and JB, this foundation has awarded scholarships to students who, with higher educational goals, sending many of them to college. And this foundation helps continue their legacy and memory. And in the words of his sons, "We still got you, pops." Ladies and gentlemen, let's give another round of applause to man of service, of integrity, to our great city, LAPD Officer Kenneth Ken Baxter. So with that, I'd love to bring up Deputy Chief Regina Scott to say a few words on behalf of the Los Angeles Police Department. Chief Scott.
Chief, welcome, and it's a pleasure to call you chief.
Thank you, it's a pleasure to hear it. But I've known Ken, uh, we were P-two's at Wilshire, and I, and I, and, and the reason why I wanted to make sure I was here, because I remember when we first got the job, and we just kept grinning, and we were like, can you believe it? We are LAPD officers, and it's our responsibility. What we kept saying was, it's not about us, it is not about us, and that we have to do better. And he did this. I'm so proud of him, congratulations on, uh, his promotions, and then what he did when he took chaos and tragedy and turned this into something that's gonna make an impact. So I couldn't be more prouder than him, and Ken, you did it. You made a difference, you mattered.
Thank you, chief. We also like to bring up to say a few words, Commander Beverly Lewis, to say a few words on behalf of her command as well. Bev?
Good morning. So no one knows another person other than their family besides their partner. Ken and I were partners at Wilshire Division. And when you spend that much time together, you know, hours in a black and white, you get to know the man, not the officer. And the time that we spent together in that car, what I got to know about Ken, besides being a dedicated public servant, he was a man who loved the Lord, he loved his family, and he loved the community that he served. Ken always took the time, on every call we went on, to stop and speak to some young person in order to mentor them. So, we, these are the things, as we look to strengthen our youth programs, Ken has been doing that for years. He, he was a father to those children who didn't have a father. As much as he loved Jonathan and Christopher, he also gave that love to little boys and girls in the community. That is the type of man that Ken Baxter is. The man, not the officer. Ken, you have represented this, this department in an honorable way. I'm so proud to be your partner, proud to be your friend, and God bless you. Congratulations on your well-earned retirement.
Thank you.
Here, here. And, Mr. President, I'd like to turn over to Ken's, um, last commanding officer, Pacific Division, uh, Mr. Captain James Roberts, to say a few words on behalf of his command.
All I wanted to add, every, everyone else has, has made it very clear what kind of a guy Ken was, but I just wanted to add that, uh, as a parent, our, our children are our, our legacy, and, uh, no parent should lose their kids, and, and less than a year ago, Ken did. But if you do a little research into these two young men, um, it's amazing, the, the, uh, the leadership they provided to young men in the Watts community through basketball, uh, you could read on and on and on about the, the people that, whose lives they affected, and, and Ken's the beginning of that, and he remains a part and an ambassador of that Drew League, and, uh, and we thank him for making a difference, both in the uniform and, and out of the uniform. So, thank you, Ken, and thank you, Councilman.
So also, if I can, Mr. President, before we turn it over to Officer Baxter, is, um, recognize, um, Councilmember Bonin, who couldn't be with us today. And in talking to Mike, he, um, can just know that Councilmember Bonin, on behalf of the residents of, uh, Council District Eleven, to recognize your commitment and leadership to the Los Angeles Police Department and the residents of CD Eleven. And, uh, he extends his, his love, his blessings and gratitude, and wishes, uh, the best to you on your retirement. So with that, Mr. President, colleagues, help me welcome to the podium, Ken Baxter.
First of all, I wanna thank this city council for this great honor. Thank you, Councilman Buscagno, um, and, and just everybody. I'm not gonna be long. Um, it was a pleasure to serve this city for thirty-one years, let me say that. Um, coming out of Watts, you know, not a lot of great expectations that they have on young men, and, um, I came out of there and raised two great young men who served their community as well. Um, I wanna thank all my friends that are standing behind me. You, you, you don't get this far without support, and, um, I, I've been blessed beyond compare. My mom's eighty-three years old, she made it here, you know, my car, I wanna thank her for being here. My fiancee Christine, thank you, babe, for being here, and everybody, um, I wanna thank, I've got lieutenants, I've got, I got chiefs behind me, and commanders, and just friends, just friends for being here. And there's so many more people I could thank, but most of all, I wanna thank the city for allowing me to serve. Councilman Wesson, thank you so much for having me here. Thank all the councilmen. Brianna, I see you over there. Councilman Dawson, congratulations to you and everybody around the ring. I know it's not an easy job that you have. I know it's not an easy job, day in and day out. So keep persevering, keep doing the best thing you can for the city. And I wanna thank you guys, and once again, I don't wanna thank all my friends and family, and all the officers around the ring. Thank you very much for being here, thank you.
With that, on behalf, on behalf of Councilmember Bonin, the residents of CD Eleven, and this entire city of Los Angeles, Mayor Garcetti, and this body before you, Officer Baxter, we recognize you and honor you on thirty-one years of service on your day of retirement with the Los Angeles Police Department. God bless you, we love you, sir.
Give him another round of applause. And, sir, your job was much more difficult than ours. Bless you, and thank you for your years of service. Mr. Clerk, why don't we reconsider the ordinances, and, so if you could take care of that?
Very good, sir, those would be items seven and eight.
Okay, members, first, we're gonna vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Now let's actually vote on those items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, I've been informed that it would be appropriate at this time to vote on item thirty-one, as amended? So, uh-
And that motion has been circulated, sir.
Okay, let's open the roll. Close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
All right. Mr. Coretts?
President, I'd like to make an introduction on behalf of, uh, Councilmember Bonin, of our Health Commissioner and Marvis de Resonant, Ron Cato. Stand up, let's give him a hand.
Yeah, give him a round of applause, welcome, Mr. Commissioner, welcome.
He's the executive director of MOA Wellness, Wellness Center in Delray in CD Eleven, and he's been involved in things like, uh, helping to write the Health and Wellness Chapter of our general plan, so, uh, if I could ask him to say a couple words?
Go ahead, sir.
I'd like to thank the, uh, all the council members here, including our, starting with our president, uh, Mr. Wesson, and unfortunately, um, uh, our council member Mike Bonham isn't here today. I'm here to, um, introduce, um, twenty youths from Japan. They're a part of a, a group where, if they could stand up?
Stand, stand up, guys.
Here in Los Angeles, there's a Plan for a Healthy L.A. Since the time of former council member Mike Bonham, um, um, Bill Rosenthal, we've been very active as the MOA Wellness Center, trying to support the various health fairs throughout the city and throughout the, uh, uh, district. And we have youths from Japan that are visiting us, seeing our activities, and, uh, with the goal of maybe in the future, um, supporting these different initiatives, uh, in Japan as well, uh, as volunteers and as staff members. So thank you very much for taking the time to, uh, uh, meet with our youths.
Well, thank you, let's give him one more round of applause, welcome, guys, welcome.
Thank you, Councilman Coretts.
Mr. Kerkorian? It's my understanding, so the floor is yours?
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, today marks the one-hundred-and-tenth birthday of one of the greatest pillars of American literature, William Seroyan, who was born in nineteen oh eight in Fresno. Um, William Seroyan, uh, his first stories appeared in the nineteen thirties, and he drew, uh, much of his inspiration for what he wrote from his childhood experience as the son of immigrants, as someone, uh, who lived among the, uh, hard-working poor of the Central Valley. Um, a lot of his, uh, works dealt with the rootlessness of the immigrant experience in the United States, and how, uh, people who, uh, live difficult lives, often in poverty, formed the foundation and backbone of what our country, uh, is. His first literary breakthrough came at the age of twenty-six, uh, when his first collection of stories, The Daring Young Man on the Flying Trapeze, was published. Uh, that was soon followed by another collection, Inhale and Exhale, and then his first play, uh, My Hearts in the Highlands, which debuted on Broadway in nineteen thirty-nine. In nineteen forty, the next year, William Seroyan, uh, won the Pulitzer Prize for The Time of Your Life, but he turned it down because he said, "Well, it's no more great or good than anything else I wrote." So he actually turned down the Pulitzer Prize. Seroyan was concerned, his works were concerned with the basic goodness of all people, um, especially, uh, the obscure, uh, the naive, um, and with the value of everyday life. He celebrated their good humor in the face of poverty, uh, with a steadfast message of hope and resiliency, uh, and his mastery of speaking the voice of, um, people who are struggling, uh, brought his characters alive and resonated with people around our country, particularly during the Great Depression and during World War Two. Uh, he was especially known for My Name is Autumn and The Human Comedy, uh, which were immensely popular in the nineteen forties. And with his popularity and his success, uh, he came to Los Angeles and became a, a fixture in the literary world here. Uh, Mr. Weisar spent a lot of his time in the bookstores around Sixth Street at the time, which was a real literary hub, and, and Mr. Seroyan was, uh, one of the, was the highlights of that community. Um, he then became a screenwriter and wrote the original screenplay for Human Co-, for The Human Comedy, uh, which, uh, was an MGM film in nineteen forty-three, for which William Seroyan won the Academy Award for Best Original Screenplay. Uh, he was, of course, important to everyone in this country, but he was especially important to, uh, the Armenian-American community, who cherished him as a spokesperson for, uh, the immigrant community of Armenians in the San Joaquin Valley around Fresno, uh, as somebody who told our stories and made those stories a part of the fabric of the American cultural experience. And he was, in fact, so celebrated by the Armenian community that when he died at the age of nineteen seventy-two, um, he was cremated, half of his ashes remained in Fresno, half of his ashes were taken to Yedivun, uh, where they were interred in the Com- were taken to Yedivun, where they were interred in the Komitas Pantheon of the greatest Armenian artists of history. So, we're here to celebrate Saroyan and his incomparable achievements on the 110th anniversary of his birth, but we're also here to mark a tremendous presentation by our own Los Angeles Public Library, and it's twofold. First, there is right now a wonderful exhibit on Saroyan at the Central Library, photographs and items from Saroyan's life, his first edition books and other things. It's a wonderful exhibit that you can go and visit right now. And then on September 15th, as part of the library's L.A. Made series, which if you're not familiar with, you need to be, because this is a series of free presentations throughout our city, hosted by the library, that represent the full breadth of the cultural fabric of Los Angeles, with performances in the Central Library and elsewhere that are free and open to the public. So, on September 15th, L.A. Made is featuring a premiere performance of unpublished works by William Saroyan, plays that have never before been published, and I will get into how that came about in a moment. But on September 15th, for free, you can come to the Central Library and see never-before performances of Saroyan plays. So, in making this all happen, there were two people that really were central to this. One is one of the really bright lights in our library system, the Research and Special Collections Manager, Ani Boyajin, who's here with me today, and also the Assistant General Manager of our Personnel Department, believe it or not, who is also an award-winning producer of plays, Adam Kuyumjan, who's here and will be producing the works that are going to be performed. And before I introduce them, though, I want to take a moment to thank our City Librarian, John Zabo, for making this entire event possible, and he's here with us, so please join me in welcoming our City Librarian, John Zabo.
Thank you so much, Councilmember, and it's a pleasure to be here, and all of us at the L.A. Public Library are incredibly proud of both this exhibit and the forthcoming performance on September the 15th. It really exemplifies what the library is all about, and that we are about celebration of cultures in L.A., the diversity of L.A., and telling the stories of Los Angeles. We are not only an education organization, but very much an arts and culture organization as well. And in leading much of this work is the incredibly talented, as Councilmember Krikorian said, Ani Boyajin, who leads our Research and Special Collections work, and who understands that her job is not only as a steward of these precious resources that we have at the L.A. Public Library, but it's important that we lift them up and that we use them to tell stories through the exhibits like the exhibit on William Saroyan, and also the performance as well. But it is an incredible exhibit. I saw it just this week, and highlights the words and images of Saroyan, and I'm also incredibly excited that so many people in L.A. from all over, as well as visitors to L.A. and downtown L.A. and who come to the Central Library, will learn about this author, and many will be exposed to him for the first time, and many will learn more about him. So, it's an incredible thing that I think the library is providing, and we thank you so much for helping to make it happen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zabo. Members, the two people that I'm going to introduce now really are reflective of, I think, the extraordinary richness of talent that we have among our city employees. And as Mr. Zabo mentioned, Ani Boyajin is a very special talent within our library system. She was a native of Los Angeles and has been working as a librarian since 1990. In 1994, she moved with her family to Armenia and set up an academic graduate library at the opening of the American University of Armenia, and she came back and joined the L.A. Public Library family in 1996, and has served the people of Los Angeles since then. She's now the Research and Special Collections Manager and oversees the library's digitization and special collections efforts.
In fact, Mr. Krikorian, I can't take it anymore. Stop, one minute, please. Mr. Herman, Mr. Spindler, you cannot disrupt presentations and disrespect these people. Sergeants, I want them removed from the council chambers right now.
And so, let me, let me...
And again, Mr. Krikorian, I was trying to let you get through your presentation. And I do want to go on the record, their behavior is just becoming more and more frightening. And sergeants, I want to, we have a responsibility to protect everybody that's here. This is not normal behavior. Mr. City Attorney, listen to this.
I can barely hear what you're saying because Mr. Herman's shouting. So, let me just explain part of what was going on. Before they started shouting now, they were constantly moving and making hand gestures. This was not one fleeting gesture. This was something that was designed to, and in fact, did distract us and keep us from being able to pay attention to what was going on in the presentation. It was disruptive of the meeting. And we're then in the unfortunate situation where we have to decide whether we're going to cut off the presentation to deal with this or not. We shouldn't have to do that.
Mr. Krikorian, again, I apologize, but please continue. I was hoping you would finish. I just couldn't take it anymore.
Thank you, Mr. President, and no need to apologize. We've become very accustomed to it, unfortunately. And just for clarification, Mr. President, your order does include removing them both from the building so that they don't continue to distract us during the meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Krikorian.
And I believe, just also, I believe there are no further Brown Act meetings, so I don't think there's any reason for them to be in the building after this.
Thank you very much. As I was saying, sometimes, as we have to deal with things like this, we sometimes need to take a step back and realize how, day in and day out, there are extraordinary people serving the people of Los Angeles. And as I was just describing, Ani Boyajin is one of those. As the Research and Special Collections Manager, she oversees the library's digitization and special collections efforts. As a public servant and a steward of some of the most incredible treasures that the Los Angeles Public Library has to offer, she's deeply committed to sharing those treasures with all Angelinos and with communities, really, the world over through the digitization effort. Ani is the organizer behind the library's Saroyan exhibit, which you can now go see. I urge you all to do so. Please join me in welcoming Ani Boyajin.
Thank you so much for that wonderful introduction. Good morning, everybody. I'm Research and Special Collections Manager, and I'm happy and excited to be here today, and thank you for this opportunity. I'm proud to have curated a very small exhibit in our first-floor galleries at Central Library entitled, My Name is Autumn, William Saroyan, a Native Armenian Son. And it will be on view through October 7 at Central Library, and it's meant to complement and bookend a wonderful play that has been penned by award-winning playwright Adam Kuyumjan. That's making its world debut, actually, and created expressly for L.A. Made on September 15 at 7:00 p.m. Councilmember Krikorian spoke a little about L.A. Made. At the sake of repetition, I'd like to say that it's just a wonderful cultural series, spoken word, dance, film, including local entertainers in our city, and it's, above all, it's free and accessible to all. And as you may know, Los Angeles Public Library has over 1,000 programs each month. That's each month, that inspire and engage all of our community members, whether it's making a one-on-one reference appointment to help you patent your invention, or learning a new language, help in becoming an immigrant, a citizen, or, you know, just anything that you can possibly think of, is all free and available at the Los Angeles Public Library, and we urge everyone to take advantage of that. Los Angeles is home to the largest Armenian community in the diaspora outside Armenia, and William Saroyan is a native son of Fresno, but he's also a proud Armenian. And with the exhibit, the images in the exhibit chronicle his life, but most importantly, chronicle the discovery of his homeland in 1976 and 1978, where he was accompanied by photographer Boris Borosyan, and Boris Borosyan took over 1,000 black-and-white images of him as he interacted with people on a daily basis. And they're very unique photos. We're very proud to have them on display, and thank the Armenian Museum of Fresno and the curator there, Varujan Der Simonian, for granting permission to reproduce those images. In just closing, I don't want to take too much more of your time, but I would like to thank the leadership and support of our City Librarian, John Zabo. Wouldn't have been possible without him. Also, Adam Kuyumjan, a playwright who took on this mammoth task and has published a work that highlights the unpublished plays of Saroyan, The Maverick, The Humanist, and celebrates his 110th birthday. And also, I would like to especially thank Councilmember Krikorian and his wife, Tamar, whose steadfast support has made both the performance and the exhibit possible. So, happy birthday to William, and we hope to see you all at Central Library, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ani. Next, I'd like to introduce a good friend and somebody who, as Assistant General Manager of Personnel, I get to work with frequently, especially around the budget, but he's a Renaissance man that I've known for many years, not through his service to the city as much as through his contributions to the performing arts in Los Angeles. Adam Kuyumjan is an award, in addition to his day job, which he performs extraordinarily well, he's also an award-winning playwright, director, and producer. He's the co-founder of Vista Players, the very talented theater group, who will be performing the unpublished plays on September 15th and in performances thereafter as well. He is the creative force behind this performance, and he was the one that was able to get permission to use these unpublished plays from Stanford University. He actually wrote his master's thesis on Saroyan's unpublished plays, and now gets to bring them to life. So, it's a great pleasure for me to introduce you to the Assistant General Manager of Personnel, and more importantly, for our purposes, the producer of these productions of the Saroyan plays, Adam Kuyumjan. Adam?
Good morning, Councilmembers, and thank you for having us here. The opening scene of our production is Saroyan's account of how his family immigrated to America in the early 1900s. After the Saroyans made it to Ellis Island, they faced the rather devastating prospect of being sent back because Saroyan's grandmother, Lucintak, a formidable woman, was thought to have poor eyesight. And this particular scene, for me, encapsulates how Saroyan's writing was ahead of its time and why it remains ever so relevant for us today. At the peak of his career, as Councilmember Krikorian mentioned, Saroyan was an award-winning writer, the winner of both the Pulitzer Prize and an Academy Award. He was as critically acclaimed and as popular as John Steinbeck and Eugene O'Neill, some of his contemporaries. And he was a mainstay on Broadway. At times, he even had two of his plays running on Broadway simultaneously. When he died, he left behind a treasure trove of unpublished manuscripts, which are housed at Stanford University, and Stanford was very gracious in giving us the permissions, the performance rights and permission to stage some of the unpublished plays at the library. So, even though the Saroyan papers are in Palo Alto, even though Fresno claims him as its native son, it is L.A. that will be hosting the world premiere of William Saroyan, the unpublished plays, in performance. Our production will then travel to Fresno with the original L.A. cast for a special performance there, and then will return to the Southland for two additional performances, one at UC Irvine and one in the Valley. So, I want to thank the library and Councilmember Krikorian for envisioning this opportunity and helping make it real, and I'm deeply grateful to them for inviting me to helm this project. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Autumn. And although she's not with us today, I also want to make special reference to my wife, Tamar, who helped to coordinate all of this, who really had the idea in the first place, and both inspired us to make it happen and worked very diligently with all of the folks who are here today to make this happen, so...
Hey, guys, let's give Mr. Krikorian's wife a round of applause. She's a great lady, and we want her to know we appreciate her, Paul.
And with that, members, thank you. I'd like to invite you all to join us at the library, both for the photo exhibit right now and through October 7, and then for the performance, if you can make it, on September 15 as well. Thank you all very much, colleagues.
Thank you, guys, and congratulations. Mr. Wezar?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and colleagues. We have a very special treat today. We are celebrating 30 years of Hablemos de Cine. In English, that means "Let's Talk About Cinema." It debuted way back in 1988 on Univision as a groundbreaking Spanish-language film review show, and I am joined today by Jorge Alberto Elias, the longtime host of Hablemos de Cine. His family and friends are here today. Let's give them a big round of a welcome. Thank you so much for being with us. His wife, Joanna Sartori, and his daughters, Brittany Elias Candela and Natasha Elias Lino, are here to share this special recognition that the city is presenting to Jorge and Hablemos de Cine today. Hablemos de Cine is aimed at one of the country and the movies industry's largest demographics, and that is the Latino audience. When it first came on the air at Univision with Jorge and Humberto Luna, who is a paisano from Zacatecas, Ms. Martinez, the hosts, these hosts, it was a Spanish-language Siskel and Iber, and it was a type of format that many people became very fond of. Hablemos de Cine was so unique in its intent and groundbreaking with Hollywood's lack of focus or representation of Latino actors and Spanish-speaking audiences, that its debut in 1988 caused a media sensation even for mainstream English-language television, radio, and print outlets. Very early on in its history, Hablemos de Cine's format changed, and its one constant presence through the 30 years is standing right here with us, and that is Jorge Alberto Elias. Besides providing a valuable resource to Spanish-speaking audiences and families throughout the United States, Hablemos de Cine also reminds us that Hollywood has a long way to go to ensure that Latinos are fairly represented in roles and stories that reflect our lives. While Latinos represent 18% of the United States population and 23% of the United States movie-going audience, only 6.2% of speaking roles went to Latino actors in 2017, and over the last decade, that number has been more, around 3%. We are now seeing renewed advocacy through Oscar-So-White protests and other boycotts organized by the National Latino Media Council and others, demanding fairer representation in front of and behind the camera. And so, through it all, Hablemos de Cine has continued on over the 30 years. Audiences over three decades have gravitated to Jorge's expertise in reviewing films and sharing his opinion with an audience as the skilled TV personality and host that he is. And Jorge shows no signs of slowing down. He is also leading the effort to bring mixed martial arts to the Latino market, and is blazing trails in the UFC and combat sport industry as he's... blazing trails in the UFC and combat sport industry, as he's done with Hablemos de Cine. In a career that has spanned more than 47 years, Jorge is trusted and welcomed and is a presence in the Latino families' homes week after week. And fortunately, Hablemos de Cine is still a treasured television mainstay that can be seen nationally on the Azteca Network every Saturday at 2:30 p.m. Colleagues, it gives me great pleasure to welcome Jorge Alberto Elias to these council chambers and to be recognized by the City of Los Angeles. Jorge?
Well, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity, Council Weezer, Rick Coca, to share this moment in my life with my wife, my two daughters, and my friends, actually. Miguel Angel Rodriguez El Judicial, famous actors of more than 100 films, was one of our first guests in Hablemos de Cine, a Universal Studio, 30 years ago. And he's today with us, so to complete the circle. I just want to say thank you, very honored. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. When we talk about trailblazers, oftentimes, as we see a lot of things that happen on television, you know, there's this chatter up here about who our movies and our TV industry wants to talk to, but they don't recognize that there's millions of other people also listening and there. But it was people like Jorge and others that recognized that audience and spoke to them in a language they understood, and that's why Hablemos de Cine has been so important in making sure that all people felt part of the movie industry, part of the TV industry, and ultimately, part of civic life in the United States. And so for that, Jorge, and for many other things you've done to benefit the Latino community, to benefit us as a nation that continues to strive on our diversity, and to make sure that we're all included, and to share your knowledge and experience and insight that you have, we're very happy to have you and present to you this resolution from the City of Los Angeles acknowledging the many, many years of contributions you've made to the United States. Thank you so much. Felicidades. Thank you.
Let's give them one more round of applause. Thank you, guys. One more round of applause. I'd like to recognize Marquise Harris Dawson.
Mr. Chair, as the summer days and weeks wane, one of the saddest things is that we lose our interns back to their regular matriculation schedule. And so today, we want to recognize the services of Michelle Viorato and Fiona Kirby, both students at the UCLA Graduate School of Public Policy. Next spring, they'll graduate with a master's degree in public policies. They served us very well and the people of the 8th District very well over the summer, working on legislation, community events, and helping track issues at the state legislature. So thank you to both of you for all the work that you've done on behalf of the people of Los Angeles.
Thank you, guys. Good luck to you in the future. Let me try to take some public comment. And I don't know, Mr. Clerk, if I told you, but officially, the multi-section of the public comment is closed. I'm looking for a Mr. Zamora. Please come forward. Lombardo, followed by Elias. Do you have Elias? Yes, sir, the floor is yours.
Good morning, councilmen and women. My name is Leo Barto Zamora Jr. I'm the owner of 1438 West 28th Street, zip code 9007, here to follow up regarding the LADBS case number 725674, and the facts that I expressed on the 29th of August, this past Wednesday. Civil Code of Procedure states that there will be no part in the repair of a dilapidation of a home if the tenant contributes substantially to the existence of that dilapidation or interferes substantially with the landlord's obligation to effect necessary repairs. I do have a declaration and affidavit from a repairman that was refused entry, and I just wanted to make it clear.
Finish your sentence.
That the delinquency, in terms of this order to comply, was not intentional. My mail was being withheld from me by these tenants.
Thank you, thank you. Why don't we get a copy of his declaration? Okay, do I have Elias? A, can't pronounce the first name, but last is Garcia Torres? Garcia Torres? Leo? Leo Ruiz? Leo Ruiz? Elias? Garcia Torres? Okay. That concludes general public comment. So that brings us where?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
They're posted, they're referred?
The desk is clear.
Okay, announcements, members, announcements. Mr. Buscayino?
Thank you, Mr. President. Those viewing Channel 35 and listening, we do want to invite you all to L.A. Fleet Week along the San Pedro waterfront. A host of events taking shape this weekend, including concerts, entertainment, ship tours, aerial demonstrations, galley wars on Sunday. Tomorrow, five-on-five basketball tournament. CD-15 will be playing the reigning champs, the Coast Guard, so please pray for us. The Battleship Blast High School robotics competition, fireworks show tonight, and the premiere on Amazon Prime of Jack Ryan will take place tonight, followed by the fireworks show onboard the Battleship Iowa, the Brews Blues and Barbecue on the SS Lane Victory. So please, we invite you, your family, your friends to come on down to the waterfront. And on Monday, the premiere Labor Day parade will take place in Wilmington, kicks off at 10 o'clock, followed by the picnic at the Banning Park. So everyone's welcome for the Labor Day festivities on Monday. Happy Labor Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buscayino. Any further announcements? Ms. Rodriguez?
Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Buscayino. I will see you on Monday at the picnic, looking forward to it. But colleagues, it's, you know, as we're closing out summertime, I know a number of us have hosted movie nights and a number of activities to help activate our park spaces. Tonight, we are having our final movie night. I'm really, and I want to give a special shout-out to the Department of Recreation and Parks, which has been an outstanding partner. We hosted a couple of back-to-back, pretty epic, movie nights, but the one I want to highlight is we had Jaws Movie Night at Hanson Dam Aquatic Center. We had over 750 folks in the community come out to watch Jaws while swimming in the water in the largest municipal pool in the country, which was fantastic. And it was complete with a mechanical shark that people were able to ride, so it was pretty awesome. Then to follow with an incredible celebration of Ritchie Valens and a screening of La Bamba at Ritchie Valens Park. But tonight, tonight is the epic closure. We are closing our movie night with Selena tonight, because anything for Selinas. And we have a costume contest. Want to invite everybody to come out tonight to Pacoima City Hall, where we again have our costume contest. Mr. President, I would not suggest you come dressed as Yolanda Saldivar, but it's going to be a great night, and I want to thank Donas for coming out and bringing their biddy-biddy bonbon donut. So it's going to be a good time tonight at Pacoima. I want to invite everybody out to Pacoima City Hall at 6:30. The festivities will begin. Thank you.
Sounds like a great night. Mr. Sadiya?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Two weeks ago, we had a book launch here at City Hall with the mayor, several members, former members of the council. This is tied into the role of the library system, because the public library is featured in the book quite frequently as the opportunities for us to read and develop those who are part of the book. I just stand to note that the book is number one on Amazon, so all of you who have yet to break it know that you've got some good reading ahead of you for the long weekend.
Well, I'm so excited. I know my wife was here that evening, had a phenomenal time, and it's just good stuff. Every now and then, we get some good stuff, and that is Mr. Sadiya. If I could have all members rise, adjourning motions, all members, all people in the council, please rise. I'm looking to my left side, Mr. Sadiya's side. I see no adjourning motions there. Looking to my right side, I see no adjourning, Mr. Krikorian, so sorry.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, it's with sadness that I ask that we adjourn this meeting in memory of Hakob Jake Shervanian, who passed away at his home in Glendale on August 23 with his family by his side, just a little bit after his 95th birthday. Mr. Shervanian was probably known to many of you. He was a prominent leader, not only within the Armenian community, but within other leadership circles within Southern California. He was a business leader and known to many of us. He was one of the most significant benefactors of important Armenian causes throughout the community, a man of great vision and passion and generosity throughout his life. He and his wife, Mina, who had just passed away in December of last year, together were real forces within the community, irreplaceable forces within the community. Throughout their marriage of 71 years, they continued to contribute as a family to every cause that mattered to Armenian-Americans. Jake's loss is an enormous loss to his family, but it's a loss to all of us who have benefited from the important causes that he championed. His commitment to the Armenian cause was really handed to him within his family from his parents. His father was fought in the defense of Vawn during the Armenian genocide. This is one of those moments in history when the Armenians who were being massacred stood up and rose up in defense at Vawn, and his father was one of those who played a prominent role in that defense. And so it was that sense of passion for the Armenian cause and for his people that really drove Hakob throughout the rest of his life. He was a staunch believer in justice for the Armenian people, but for all others as well. Several years ago, Jake and Mina announced a generous donation to create a youth center for Armenian youth in Gumi, Armenia. Gumi was a city that was so devastated by the Armenian earthquake, the loss of tens of thousands of lives, and it's even still trying to recover from that loss. And the Shervanian Youth Center is really a way for the young people to continue to preserve their Armenian culture, heritage, and language, to have education and to have hope for a better future. And that was thanks to Jacob and, to Jake and Mina. And I was honored to be there for the opening when they cut the ribbon. There are too many organizations to name that Jake and Mina left their imprint on, but they include the Armenian Cultural Foundation, the Armenian Educational Foundation, the Armenian National Committee, Holy Martyrs Farahin High School, Armenian Relief Society, the Adventist Health of Glendale, the Western Prelacy of the Armenian Apostolic Church, and many, many others. He was one of a kind. He was just a wonderful man to be with, a wonderful man who left such a great legacy that will last for generations still to come. And I will miss him, and everyone in our community will miss him very much. His funeral services took place yesterday. He's survived by his brother and his sister, his daughter and his son, and many grandsons, great-grandsons, nieces, nephews, and relatives, but by many who will miss him and miss the extraordinary, bigger-than-life presence that he had within our community. May Hakob Shervanian rest in peace.
Well said. Any others to my right side? Seeing none, have a great holiday weekend, members, and to all, this meeting is adjourned.